Call the court session to order. There's no cost for public hearing that I'm aware of, correct? No old items of discussion. New items of discussion include PennDOT's agility program for Dan, MOU with the Transit Authority.
You want to listen to Nancy first?
And then Jeff wants to talk about the parking lot and the products. Nancy?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to thank the board for being so willing to listen to Hudson's need for pilot progress. On Friday, they withdrew that request. They had told me earlier that they were going to spend Wednesday down with PHFC, excuse me, the housing finance agency. Whatever. In any event, they were able to go through the numbers because I think I related to some of you or maybe I did tell them power board. This is the first year they've ever had to do a 15-year cash flow projection, and it had to be positive. But when they sat down with the housing, what is it, PHF, right?
The Housing Authority.
That's it. You can tell my brain is still on fire. They went through the numbers and they said that they were not going to be ranked to any 155. So that changed the numbers as far as what they were required to carry for maintenance over the 15 years. And it was enough of a reduction so that they could pay full taxes on the property. And Hudson's reputation is that they don't ask for something unless they need it. In this case, they were able to make the numbers work, so they withdrawn the request. I'm sure that you're all grateful. I know I am because with the number of tax appeals that are pending, more than a little. So, but I wanted to come and thank you in person because I really do appreciate we hit you with it at the last minute, and I recognize that, and I apologize for that, but I also wanted to thank you for your willingness to take it on so quickly.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and strike that from the Wednesday agenda then.
Anyway, thank you for coming here. Obviously, the commissioners' office supports development in the community, you know, and whatnot. The only thing that I wanted to urge you to do is to make sure that they have a good conversation with the housing authority and with the VOC, and that they're all on the same page as far as like that development downtown. Because I know that there are concerns in different areas about how that's going to, how that would hypothetically impact.
Right, right. I've heard those concerns as well. They did, they got actual letter of support from Bob Rabel. He is, his organization is going to try and place handicap tenants into that development. As far as the housing authority, I think in some respects, there's competition, but in other respects, they're assisting different groups in the population. But yeah, they are aware of that. They have reached out.
Well, we've had, there are other organizations as well that have talked about this and wanted more information because I think that there's a lot of, depending upon what, because I don't know the details of the project other than the financial projections, for this affecting things in a very, you know, comprehensive way. Because all of those businesses that are associated with it could intermingle and, you know, there could be growth opportunities. My hope would be that it would be a positive thing, you know, that it wouldn't be necessarily a whole competitive thing.
But please, if there are questions, either, you know, send the individuals or companies or whomever to me or, you know, send me an email. I'd be happy to reach out. I've had very positive feelings about this group and these developers. I think they're willing to work with the community. They are having to make some improvements or changes, if you will, to the neighboring property. They're willing to do that. They see this as a really good project for a while.
Is there any way that we could have a, like a sit-down?
Absolutely.
Presentation with them?
Absolutely.
Because I'd really like to see that.
Sure. If you could send me some dates, then I can work with Hudson and have a, as I said, they were going to come today. And then when they withdrew the pilot, I thought, wow, there's really no need to make the trip. But I'd be more than happy to have them. And if you have other individuals or groups that you think should be invited, we can host it near the city building or here, wherever you prefer.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the city building would be the way to go because I know like the Allegheny Community Center and then like some of the other ones that are related to aging and different things, they're all very curious about what this is, how it works.
Okay.
And frankly, it's something that I think that was just kind of talked about. And now it feels like, okay, this is moving forward, or there's serious interest. It would be good for them to get, you know, to understand it or to understand what it is.
Absolutely. We'd welcome that. So send us the dates and we'll be happy to coordinate.
Merci, thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
They quote.
Hey, I've already been through a box.
Yeah.
So, any other public comment while we're talking about public comments? Wow, okay. Then we will go back to new items of discussion. Dan, would you please inform us about the PennDOT agility program?
Sure. Yeah, I have a packet of information for each of you. There's one here, a pan for Cindy as well. The talk piece is a cover letter that's put together by Adam Wazington out of the Starbuck Managers Office for PennDOT. The agility program is basically a trade of services for services between PennDOT and the government entity. What I'm asking of you is to take a look through this information and see if it might be something that would be a good fit for the county. I had asked Adam Elms to join us today to talk a little bit about the program from the PennDOT side of things, but his schedule wouldn't allow him to be here. I do believe he is planning to attend the next Cogni as a presentation on this along with some other things. So he is scheduled to come in, but I believe he's going to touch on agility as well. But this is just a cover page on the, on the front. The actual agreement itself is, it would be for a five-year period. It could be extended for an additional three-year term beyond that five years if, if things are going well with the program. There are a couple of attachments. There's just a, an agility agreement is a, is a front and back page. And then attachment A would be the terms and the conditions of it, responsibilities of each, each party. Attachment B would be the list of different services that could be provided by PennDOT. And then attachment C is a sample agility agreement that would be put in place. I also have included with this a single-page resolution that if the commissioner decides to move forward with it, it'll be a resolution that you would consider for adoption at one of your public meetings. In discussing this with Adam, you know, I asked, well, what are some of the things that the county could do in exchange? And, and some of the things that PennDOT could do for the county? And his suggestion would be crack ceiling, the bike trail, snow removal, snow removal from the parking lot here in the wintertime when we get the piles of snow, need to get rid of that. PennDOT would come in with their loader and dump truck and haul that stuff away. We have the mile marker signs too for the D6. There are six of them that have to be replaced. That would be another thing that they would be willing to do for us. As far as the county's obligation, they would be looking for things like maybe some projects involving some painting at, at some of their facilities, maybe including the prisoner work release folks for something like that. There are written documents that they need to have copied and so forth that they need to have for different projects that they're working on. So we would provide that service for them in exchange. And possibly some storage space at the warehouse if, if it works out for the county. Those are just some preliminary thoughts and ideas we had on agility. I just wanted to make you aware of the program today and give you the materials to look through. And then if you want to discuss it in a little more detail, we can either get Adam Wazington in here or Adam Elms to talk about it in a little bit more detail.
Very good. Any questions? No questions from the commissioners? Mr. Scully?
Dan, can, can the county commissioners join this program and still not have a requirement to do something? Like sign onto it, like some of the townships? But we don't, Glade especially, we don't follow our own day ones. Are we not having an agreement with them that we belong to the agility program?
Well, the way I understand it is when you set the agreement up, Joe, you identify the services that you'll trade with each other. And so, even like any agreement, I would expect you to be obligated to what you agree to. It's what I interpret.
Yeah. It's not a problem, I guess.
Any other questions?
I knew, I know that there had been some concerns before about their hourly rate versus a municipality's hourly rate. But I think that that has been resolved now, looking at asks as opposed to hourly rates. So something you might want to ask Adam at the Cogni?
Yeah.
So that has been brought up by a number of municipalities in the past, and I have made Adam aware of that. He feels that that has been resolved.
I'll give you one good example. We looked into it a few years back for that hemlock. And their requirement as to what we put down on the road and what time we must have that road followed. Because it's school buses and they want to appear salt rather than how we mix it was a big problem. The time schedule kind of goose up our planning schedule with our, our people used to go out, I'd say four o'clock, and they all have a route to run, and they wanted us to reverse it so that hemlock would be followed so many times per day. And the D word would be wrong. But I'm not saying that that would not be, you know?
I'm being told that it's a program without difference from what it used to be, so we'll see.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the agility program in the county? None? The MOU before you in your packet is between the Transit Authority of Moretown County and, and work on. This is a section. 7,504, the Emergency Management Services Code. Basically, in the event of a natural disaster or some other reason, we may need to do mass exodus. We are contracted with TAWC to provide mass transportation services. There's $40 per hour, per bus per hour, drive time, and $20 per hour, per bus, for wait time. We have been contracted with TAWC to do this for, I don't know how long, but this is just a renewal, slight weight or slight increase, correct?
Well, the pre, previously, it was basically like a handshake agreement. It wasn't like a formalized agreement, so this is just a formalized version of it.
Okay. Anyway.
I don't know that it incorporates any kind of an increase or anything. I think that it was just understood.
Okay. So either way, in the MOU, if we need it, I'm sure that it was a reasonable price.
No, I think.
Okay. Any questions about it? Very good. Projects. The only project that I'm aware of to discuss today is the parking lot slash sidewalk.
Well, it's more so the sidewalk than the parking lot, and I will explain why. So what I, did I hand you a copy of this, right? Okay. So basically, the two things that we've been reviewing with the county's engineering firm is the sidewalk around the building. This due in large part because of a single point of entry. And then the parking lot, which is in a rough state, just generally speaking, really needs to be redone. The goal originally was to try to make adjustments to the parking lot that would improve traffic flow, reduce the accidents that we have, be more ADA-friendly, and a number of other things. And then also address some of the water issues that we have because the, you know, the grading on the parking lot's not correct, and there's water and mud pooling in a variety of different places, and then it's just tearing the parking lot up through the winter. So gone through many iterations with this, and basically what I'm proposing today, like as a concrete item, is the sidewalk bit. No pun intended. I can't help myself. And then, and then just to have a general discussion for basically affirmation from the other commissioners on a parking lot request that I'm essentially going to make. So what is in front of you is a proposal from E&amp;M engineers to basically generate a sidewalk that runs from where the current sidewalk ends next to the boiler over here, around the building, and all the way up to Fourth Avenue. And it would require like the change in some of the parking spots over here, and it would basically run all the way around. There's a case to be made to just have a contractor do it. On this particular project, I don't think that that's going to be possible for two reasons. One is the city's code enforcement is pretty stringent when it comes to sidewalk installation, especially in ADA-sensitive areas, and I have a feeling that they're going to basically force us to have an engineer either way in order to do it. And the second part is that because on the, on the west side of the building, it dips down essentially, and then there's a step which causes a problem for somebody in a wheelchair that's going to come from the front of the building all the way to the back of the building. There needs to be an incline essentially that runs up the side of the building in order to get rid of that step so that they can make it from the front of the building all the way to the back. So the total, so second piece of this is Eric Hearn has done a very admirable job of securing grant funding through P-Corp and P-COMP in order to pay for the sidewalk project. Currently, we have roughly $71,000 in grant funds in order to pay for the sidewalk. The project as it stands with the proposal that I have in front of you totals $92,392. So the county match would be $21,392. Now, there's a couple of things that I basically want to throw out as a part of this for consideration. I think that this estimate is incredibly high, like unnecessarily high. One of the challenges is, is once you reach a certain threshold, you automatically have prevailing wage for, for a project. I don't, and, and that range is somewhere into the $20,000 range. This is just going to go over, so part of it is going to be a prevailing wage issue. But my other point is, is I think that there's a lot of work that we can do with the contractor to get the allocations that they have here much lower. For instance, they're estimating $40,000 in concrete for the sidewalk. And if you walk along here, you're talking about probably 100 yards, maybe. And generally, right now, concrete's at about $90 a yard. So in my opinion, that number should be more like 10,000 or maybe 15 at the most. So they're overshooting it by probably, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 dollars at least, in my opinion. So my point is, is I think this number is going to come down a lot. But I really want to move forward with the project in order to, because there's a window on the grant funding before we have to essentially reallocate it. And I think this job could get done for probably like 40,000 total with the engineering. But, but I think that it's, well, maybe, maybe 50. It's important to note in this proposal that all the work that the engineer has done, both on the parking lot and the sidewalk up to this point, is included in the proposal. So that's why it's probably higher than what it would be just to do the sidewalk. I just wanted to let everybody know that. So, so the job's going to be definitely under the $71,000 grant range, I think, when it's finally said and done. But I, I'm bringing this proposal to you so that we can add it to the agenda for Wednesday, vote on it, and then, and then start getting bids. Because basically, we're at the point now where we really need to be putting the bid documents out now for the spring so that as soon as they come in, they can, in the spring, they can work on it.
Right. And so you've got the P-Corp and P-COMP going towards this. One of them, are you trying to allocate next year's to this or this year's?
I can't remember. I think that it's last year's and this year's, I think, is the way it was set up and which is why the need, like there was some portion of last year's, like 15,000 was like leftover. And then I think it's this year's allocation.
I guess it's been approved, it doesn't matter. We already applied for it, we're granted it.
Yeah. Well, I just, I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with putting the sidewalk in, like and moving forward with the engineer. I, I, I was, I've been going back and forth on just getting a contractor, like taking the drawings that the engineer's already done, laying out where it's going to go, and then basically working with them to just do it that way. But I, I firmly believe that the city's going to require us to have an engineer on this job. And the other thing I would just, you know, is that over on this side of the building, those windows that go down and that are all going to get filled in, have to get filled in. So there's, there, there is a bit of like architectural work that absolutely has to be done, I think, in order to get it done, so. So does that. So does anybody have any questions about that at this point? Cindy, I realize that you don't have this in front of you because I just, I just copied it. I'll scan it and send it to you so you can review it. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
No question.
Okay. So the second piece is the parking lot. And this is something that we've gone back and forth on with the engineering firm. I didn't provide a proposal because they've given several, and I think all of them are probably out of the range of what we're capable of. And frankly, at this point, I think, you know, especially with budget concerns, you know, I don't want to say unnecessary, but, you know, beyond what we really need. So I went back through and got the spec documents from the last time the parking lot was done. And what I, what I'm basically asking for is permission to basically put together spec docs based partially on the work that's already been done on the engine, by the engineering firm, and then also based on prior specs, and then getting a bid document together so that we can bid that out for spring of next year to get done, to have the parking lot done next year. Because in my personal opinion, some people might disagree with me on this, parking lot's in really rough shape. And between that and with the ADA issues that we have with the parking lot, it needs to be redone. I don't think that it was done properly the last time, so I think that there are things that need to be done in order to keep an eye on it, to get it to where it needs to be. But I don't, it's, I'm at the point now where I don't think it's a job that we need an engineer to do, to, to complete. And I think that we could get it done for under $25,000.
You mean the engineer?
No, the, the actual parking lot. Like I think we could get the parking lot done for under 25.
Okay.
Yep. Well, let's put it this way. That, the last time the parking lot was done, it was done for 22, somewhere in there. Actually, it might even have been 18 or 19.
That was just a research.
Yep. And there were some requests, you know, in that for things that were done. I think that, you know, we're not going to be able to dig the whole lot up and all of that. But I, rather than spending substantially more than that to, you know, do a lot of extra work, I would rather just get, get it done, select a good agency to do it, you know, have really thorough spec documents, and then have it repaved properly. So that way, we can avoid something that's really excessive, you know? I would like to, there are things that I would have liked to have done a little bit more with the parking lot. I just don't believe that, I just don't believe that we can get the, I, I think that the engineering costs would be too high and for all the other things that we've got. I'm just, unless somebody's really more interested in it than I am, then I suppose we can move forward. But I just, you know.
Okay. Any questions?
So are you, are you guys comfortable with me like putting some spec documents together based on what the work that's already been done to send to you? And then if everybody's comfortable with it, you know?
Concrete work?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, no, 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 for the, for redoing the parking lot.
Yes.
Okay.
Cindy, anything?
Yeah.
Mr. Scully?
First of all, I don't think you can dig this parking lot for 25,000, though. So I don't know how thick you want to put your blacktop on, but you also need to repair the base prior to them putting blacktop down. When you're, in my opinion, you're defeating your purpose. I wouldn't want a thin coat on it, and then several years, two, three years down the line, you're going to have the same problem. Your base problems bad, they have to work on your base, which may involve putting some like crush rocks or different, to smooth, to build that up strong before they put blacktop on. And another question I have, Daniel, with your sidewalk. I know we have one point of entry in the courthouse, but being city zoning, like this entrance where you usually get into the basement, you're going to have to have an ADA entrance there. For every entrance in the county, they're going to force you to have an ADA entrance to the sidewalk, so.
I don't know how they could do that.
Well, it's an entrance, maybe.
I know, but it's only for a handful of people, and I don't, and technically speaking.
All right, I'm coming out of the parking lot. I'm parked over there somewhere. For me in a wheelchair, myself or whoever, I would have to come down to where the one point in the parking lot where I didn't, they're going to argue that I have to go out in the parking area itself where cars park backed up, pull there, to get to the ADA walkway. Where if you had an ADA walkway where there used to be, where you, then I could go along the sidewalk. That's going to be their argument. You don't have an ADA way to get onto the sidewalk at every entrance. They're going to say you have to have it.
Okay. We can do the cut at every.
Well, I, I think that, I think that's something that we would work out with the engineer. No one's ever raised that as an issue because the only public entrance is at the back end of the building, or exit is at the back end of the building. Technically speaking, nobody, the public should not be leaving through the personnel exits.
I'm just saying, that's one thing they could bring up.
It's possible. As far as the parking lot bit goes, I agree with you. Like as far as the way to do it would be to dig it up, the problem is, is that the minute that happens, you're talking about 100 or $200,000 job. And, and at this point, I think that even though you're right that it probably four or five years without that happening, you're going to have to redo the parking lot again, even with a good job done by a reputable company. But that's the, you know, that's the trade-off, I guess, is, you know, we don't, I think that with all of the other budget items that we have, it's going to be really hard to figure doing this for 100 or $200,000.
Have you ever also considered on your pastrals that you have, when you come on the entrance, often forced you, putting coal patch in there right now?
Please, I have personally done that.
Yeah.
And isn't holding.
It holds for a period of time. I mean, in the winter, because of the challenges with snow buildup, like in this lot especially, it does not drain well, and, and there's a lot of like places where water gets caught up. It's, I just think it's always going to be a real.
And that's another problem that you might have to solve by doing your parking lot is your drainage. If you have problems with water, you're going to have to create drainage excess off, so. I hope you can do it for 25, but I'd like to see the final bill.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I think what's going to happen is, is it's going to be what is essentially, I don't want to say a patch job, but like a, it's, it's not a rebuild. It's going to be, they're going to repave the lot, you know? And there are some things that we'll point out in the spec documents of stuff that they need to focus on in order to try to mitigate as much as possible, but we're not going to be able to, like, like you said, I mean, this is what we've been looking at with the engineering firm for a while now, is how do you, and, and there was a lot of stuff that we were talking about doing, but it's just, with, with all the other things that the county needs to do, trying to justify like a $200,000 build on the parking lot, it's just not, you know, it's just not feasible, unfortunately. Because I, I think, you know, I did, and especially for us with, with like slips and the winter stuff where, you know, snow and ice buildup is a major issue or concern. But that's it. So are you, are you okay with putting that together then, or me putting that together?
Yeah, but I would also like you to talk to ABM about possibly rolling it into their bigger, long-term project.
That would be fine. Yeah, I don't mind with that too. Yep.
Is there going to be anything done on the, on the wheelchair ramp coming up to the back door at this point?
Wheelchair ramp?
Where they, they come in at the back, it's still, people still have a hard time getting up.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you mean on the end of the, where the sidewalk meets the pavement, right? Yeah, no, that's something that would get fixed as a part of the build, so this is one of the other reasons to get it done spring of next year.
But I was just wondering, is there gonna be anything done prior to spring?
I don't know how we would, I honestly, unless somebody's, if anybody's got a suggestion as to how to fix it in the short term, I'd like to hear it. I haven't, I haven't heard anybody pitch anything yet. I mean, that's why we looked at this in the first place, you know, it was like, okay, the lot's already kind of starting to deteriorate, you know, and then we have these ADA issues where there's, you know, the way it was done the last time kind of is not ideal and so, you know, that's part of doing this is trying to fix them, you know, and that's why I wanna get it done ASAP so that it's just, you know, so we don't have to deal with that. But that's as soon as I think it can done in spring next year. I don't know how, unless you tear, unless we have the maintenance crew bust that all up and then try to do some kind of, you know, patch job in the short term and at this point, I just think, you know, we'll let it ride until spring.
Just, my office is right there, so I see the people coming in and...
Oh, yeah.
...scooters and they have a hard time getting up over that lip.
Yeah, this is, it's not good.
Your blacktop plants are, if not closed by now, they're very close to being closed for the season.
Yep.
Even in New York State where a lot of blacktop is brought to Warren County, but they only open like two weeks long.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how the city's gonna get those roads up without me. They're working on it. I drove down it a couple times, I'm like, God, it feels like Munich circa nineteen thirty-five.
I think it's coming next week, not this week. It's crazy.
Yeah, that's, I'll talk about it. What a mess. They really, wow. Did you know about that? Did you know about that?
No, I didn't.
The, the company that they had contracted to pave the roads quit just in the middle of it.
And milled it and left.
And just milled the road and then...
Not by the cancer center.
I was like, talk about a, a...
I wouldn't advise anybody to ask them to drive me in there.
Okay. Meeting agenda, unless there's any other questions or comments in relation to any other projects.
The only thing is, is I just wanted to reiterate that I'm gonna be sending you some appointments. I haven't done any yet because I've been running around with other stuff on, for the Human Services Summit Committee. I haven't gotten any of the names yet, but I'll, I'll have some for you today.
Okay. New business for the Wednesday meeting includes CDVG allocation for twenty-eighteen funds, this MOU with the transit authority that I just spoke about, settlement agreement. Anything else that needs to be on the agenda?
I just wanted to let you know that I had a talk with Lori Dunlop about CDVG funds and not this year because obviously like she's trying to get the, all the stuff lined up. But next year, sometime in the spring, sitting down with her and having a conversation about really identifying, spearheading some projects of our own through CDVG, just because previously she's been kind of, it's been her responsibility to kind of go and solicit projects from municipalities and different things and what we found at different times is that they don't necessarily follow through on, on some of the projects, some money is getting reallocated, some of these other things. And I think that there are a lot of things that we could allocate that money for or projects that we could drive that would be, that we could then shepherd through from start to finish so they get done, just 'cause they're, they're just, she, I feel bad, she, she's really in charge of like basically running around trying to keep it shut. It's, I think there's stuff that we could do.
Can I make a comment on your CDVG money? As you well know, Blake Township and myself personally have tried to give a lot of CDVG money. I don't consider, I live in a wealthy community, but CDVG money is based on where the project is and what is the status of the people living in the area. We've had, I've had, asked her, no fault to her, to get CDVG money and she comes back, which is legally to say, that area that we want the project done in is not financially poor enough. And that's the word I want to use. So, there, if they can loosen up some of the regulations as to what...
That's a federal, yeah, that's a federal.
I know, it's a federal, but somehow we, I mean, that CDVG money that she has to jockey around to keep it could be used throughout a lot of municipalities, but then when you get into the financial valuation of the residents of that particular area, you get shot down because they're above the...
Well, I mean, so the good thing is, is that Lori has a ton of data on areas that are applicable. The, the challenge in my opinion is, is a lot of those areas are economically distressed and so even their township supervisors are strapped for time and, and energy and resources in order to take the time to like mine the programs, you know? And so, it's, you know, unless we go in and kind of really help them, coordinate them, work with them to get them to where they can utilize the funds, really what's happening now is the motivated municipalities are the ones that get the money. Doesn't necessarily mean they're the ones that are in the greatest need, like for the money, like, and, and I think that there are a lot of, like, we, that money should be utilized in a strategic fashion because there's so little of it. It can't, you know, it feels like right now, if, if we can come up with something, we put it down as a patch, whereas we have areas where we have serious needs and we're not kind of addressing it.
Well, I don't want my township, Glade, to be penalized because, as you well know, I don't think there's many more, more, more motivated than I am to get money for repairs in the township.
I know, Joe, you'll, you'll take everything that isn't nailed down.
That's right. Well, I mean, it's not my fault and I don't know if it's true, that other township supervisors aren't motivated. There's no more motivation than there is in Glade, even with the present board and the previous board that I worked with. I have projects that we could use that money on, but by going by the federal rules, we could kick that. You know, Act thirteen, I mean, I could use some more of that, but we already got the Red Row Bridge and, you know, are you being greedy? No, I'm not being greedy, but don't penalize my township because other municipalities don't seem to be interested in trying to get that money.
Yeah.
That's what hurts me and hurts our township.
Well, I, I said hurts is kind of a strong word.
Well, handicaps, let's put it that way. Only can hurt us, but...
I, I think the consideration is, is more the citizenry overall, like, and, and there's places that like you guys have got money because you have good motivated township supervisors and that's attributed to your municipality. There are areas that have gotten nothing, that have never gotten anything.
And the old saying goes, if you sit on your hands, don't hold me back because my hands are free.
Well, I, I, I think it's less, you like, yeah, that's like, okay, let's move on.
Pretty much.
Yeah, let's move on. We could discuss this for hours.
Yes. Okay, so is there anything else to add to the agenda on Wednesday? You know, are there any departments that want to give updates? The committees?
I'll pass this around. I wanna, it is an updates repository list. It's not public yet, I still wanna tweak some things first, but the first few pages I'm sure you're familiar with is the typical repository sale list that we have on the website that everyone can download, look at, whatever. So, we get a lot of calls and questions, like, hey, I'm looking for, you know, this many acres or this or that, and they wanna see pictures of where it's located. I always tell them, you have to go down to the map room, you gotta do your own research. So, what I decided to do was actually use the pictometry that fly over maps and incorporate those with our repository sale listing. So, if you look in the next pages, you'll see I have a picture that shows the parcel with the, you know, streets nearby and then right below it, you'll see where other parcels that are nearby. And then below that, you will see a posting picture if it is one and then below that, anyone who notified in the judicial sale of any lien against that property that were notified. Of course, I gotta tweak this a little bit, make it fit on one page and stuff like that, but you get to make the idea. Now, if you look at the first parcel that has the maps, it's kinda interesting because the parcel that's outlined there, we found out the pool was a deck and then there's a house right next door. That pool and deck belongs to the person in that house. So, if something happened along the lines of the transfer of the deeds where now that property's on a repository for two hundred and fifty bucks. I made sure to mount a letter before this meeting so they can take care of it, but...
So, we could buy a deck and a pool.
We could buy a deck and a pool for two hundred and fifty bucks right now. So, I don't know what happened, but...
It's something that each of us, so many say.
Well, thank you for taking the initiative on this. So, you're saying this is like a booklet in your office or...
Basically, it's, yeah, it'll be available on the website as well, as soon as I finalize everything. It'll be in color, so it'll be a lot more, yeah, the colored versions to let you do the reading. I think a lot of people, you know, stop some of the questions, the roads isn't there or what's going on, so.
Yeah, that's true.
So, we did that for each individual parcel that's on the repository list. So, I think that will help a lot of people in the future and take care of some issues. I even found some parcel that couldn't locate those, I went down to the care and turned down as an issue, so it was brought up the list, helped clear out some things. Now, I'll pass these around. This is our judicial sale list. Now, I'm hoping to do the same day of judicial sale. So, I'll have a judicial sale list online and then you'll be able to see pictures of each individual property that we're gonna bring to the sale. So, again, you'll see the corresponding roads and that's through the parcel, parcel numbers nearby, posting pictures and that whoever we served for the judicial sale and whether they were served or not. A lot more information that was presented and passed. I think a lot of people will like that. A lot of work, but I think it'll, it'll help a lot of people.
You, so you're gonna post this, all this stuff online, right?
Yeah, the repository list, once I go through and tweak some things and stuff, I'll...
Yeah. And the repository list has been up before. Do you, do you feel like having this stuff on the website reduces your foot traffic?
Yes. Yep.
Good?
Yep, yep.
Good work.
That's great. Hopefully people like it. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, that'll be posted on your page?
Yeah, on the past one website, yes. Probably the repository list by Friday. Judicial sale, I'm not gonna have to do it until probably next year, so.
Okay.
I'll put it already, ready uploaded, so.
Good. Thanks for taking the initiative on that.
Yep.
Good idea.
Okay.
Any other updates? Okay. Uh, nothing unusual in my schedule. Commissioner Edelson?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay, Commissioner Morrison?
No.
Any general discussion? Pause for executive session? Very good.
Have a good afternoon.
She already has one.